All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of June 2nd, 2025. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
Poyness absent. McGee.
Here.
Montalbano.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
All right, if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we thank you this evening for our country, our community, our families, and our freedom and our sovereignty. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our country's history. We pray that you bless each one of them and their families for their heroic sacrifice. And we thank you this evening for our police, fire, and paramedic first responders, not only in Belvidere but across the country, who serve our citizens and bravely respond no matter what the call, no matter what the circumstances. We pray tonight for their well-being and ask that you be with them as they continue to serve our community. Tonight, we pray for guidance and that you give each of us patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, strength, and courage as we conduct our city's business. We pray for these things, in Christ's name, amen. All right, we have three individuals registered for public comment. We have, first, Livia Bane. Livia? Oh, would you please, I'm sorry, please come up here and we'll turn the microphone on and put the camera on you directly.
It's very tight close-up.
No, we won't. Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, ready to go?
We're ready. If you'd state your name again and, yeah.
My name's Livia Bane. I am the Regional Manager for Birth to Five Illinois. We oversee Winnebago and Boone County, so that is why I am here tonight. Little background, because I'm sure maybe nobody here except for, I know Kimberly and my group has heard of Birth to Five Illinois, but we are a statewide childcare advocacy organization. So, as we like to say, there's 39 of me, 39 Kellys, 39 Jennifers across the state. So what we do is, we don't provide services, you know, we're not like an early intervention, we don't provide childcare, we're an advocacy organization. So we take a look at what the current needs are, what the barriers are, what is going good, because there's good things too, and we promote that. So, we're here tonight to let you know what is going on in specifically Belvidere City. And if you take a look at that handy dandy pie chart I provided you, what I want you to take away overall is the total number of children. So again, we're early childhood, so we are focused on those kiddos that are birth to five years old, so before they enter the school system. And what we like to say is that kindergarten through 12th, you know, that is your bulk of funding, your bulk of care, you know, so parents can work typically, you know, during the day. What we miss a lot in early childhood is the funding and the timing. And so you'll see from your chart here, when we talk about full-time slots, so that's, you know, like actual a seat, the ratio in the classroom that your early childhood providers can have, you'll see that out of 1,888 children in Belvidere, you have 122 licensed family childcare options and 354 licensed childcare, so those bigger centers in town. Side note, I did look at your minutes for the night and I happened to notice you do have a daycare, second reading, no affiliation, just happen-sensed happening. So, those are your full-time slots for your working families, that's it, that's all that we have in Belvidere. Your private parochial, so think, you know, your Emmanuel Lutheran where they have the halftime day slots, and then your preschool for all, so your District 100. Wonderful, great, those are growing with time, still only part-time care, not conducive for your working families. There is a thing called license-exempt care, where an individual could take in three, so it's not like underground childcare, you're actually like being monitored, maybe you're accepting subsidy dollars, you're not licensed. We estimate you have about 25 slots in Belvidere. So, most importantly is that red. You have 1,317 roughly kiddos that are unknown, we don't know what is happening for them, there are no slots available. So, are they in a situation where there's maybe two parents in the household, one is working? Maybe. We do have further data that breaks down your working parents, whether it's one in the family or two, and how many of them are working. And what we see with this large number is that there's a deficit. So, where are they? Is it a safe environment? Is it conducive for working families? Are families able to contribute to the economy? We're not real sure. But, large deficit, that's what I wanted to share with you tonight and to take away. And again, if anybody is interested about more data or breaking it down further, we are available. I do have more of these, can I leave them with you? Okay. Should anybody be interested, we have a website there and we'd be happy to talk further. So, thank you.
Do you mind, Ms. Bane, if I ask anybody if they have any questions?
Oh, for sure.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
So if anybody has any questions for Livia, certainly free, Alderman Peterson.
Thank you. What was the basis for the census of the total children?
Fiscal, actually it was fiscal year '23, polled from the ICAM data website, that's through the Illinois State University. So what was the basis? What do you, what do you mean?
I meant, where did you pull the numbers from?
Gotcha, yep. So it's from the ICAM website, which is also then polled from the census information as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, or Ms. Bane, feel free. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kelly McNeil. Kelly, welcome.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I am also with Birth to Five Illinois. My name is Kelly McNeil, and I am the Family and Community Engagement Specialist for Winnebago and Boone County. So pretty much, we do lots of the same work as my position in Livia's, however, it's kind of different in the fact that, as a Family and Community Engagement Specialist, my role specifically is fostering those connections with the local families, to understand what's working for them, what's not working for them, and how we can make it better. And with those connections, I really get to understand their unique needs. So, the direct engagement with the early childhood systems, so whether that's preschool, Head Start, early intervention programs, counseling services, I am there for those families to listen, most importantly, to learn and to collaborate with other agencies in the area. So, in contrast to the more traditional approach that often kind of dictates to the families what they need, saying here, we're going to give you this, this is what they say you need, here you go. Well, that's not true for everyone. So, what really kind of sets Birth to Five Illinois apart is that we listen to what the families tell us they need, and then we shoot that information to different agencies, different policymakers. So, it's them telling us what they need versus us saying, here's a couple gift cards, here's, you know, some vouchers, and this is what you guys need. So, it's the opposite. And that's really a priority for me. And it's really a strength-based model, and it values their experiences. Because Livia has data, we all have data, those numbers are important, however, those stories from those families are important as well. So, I think that's a very intricate part of my position, and it's important that those stories be heard as well. Because it really is, it's a good thing to hear that, and I'm just going to tell you, that families in Belvidere, they love to be here, right? So, they love to be here, they're excited about the economy, they're excited about things that are coming, how everything is growing. And what is the icing on the cake is to make sure that when they come here with their children, they have somewhere to go while they're working. Because the quality, they love the smaller classroom sizes, the more intimate personal care that is available here. And we want that to shine. So, anything that we can do to shine a light on those positives, that's what we're going to do. Because with those good stories, I also hear the stories that aren't so good. You know, like specifically, I'll just share this one real quick. A mom, she was on public assistance for years and years and years. She got a job at a local agency, started doing really good for herself and her family, she escaped a really bad situation in the previous town that she was in. She started to move up in her position here when she got promoted, and then she had some issues with childcare. And it just, it didn't cause her to be absent from work, but kind of just late on a couple of occasions, you know, trying to find out, you know, something fell through at the last minute, childcare being inconsistent, and ultimately ended up getting demoted from the things that she had just, you know, kind of worked so hard for. So those are the heartbreaking pieces, and those are the things that we don't want to happen. Because we want this area to be one of the best places for families to want to come and raise their children. So, that is my piece of Birth to Five Illinois, and I just really thought that it was important that I share that with you all tonight. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. McNeil. Does anybody have any questions for Kelly? Alderman Albertini?
Sure.
Thank you. How do you come to interact with these families? Do they seek you out, or do you seek them out?
Oh, we seek them out. So, we collaborate with folks at the Health Department, people from District 100, we volunteer at everything from the Build a Bike programs to over at the Y MCA, just trying to get out there to be where the people and where the families are. So, I just come up, introduce myself, or if we have a booth, you know, I'm smiling, I probably got something to give away, but ultimately, I just want to introduce myself and make sure that next time they see me, they know who I am, just kind of try to build that relationship. So, we really do kind of seek them out, like Livia said, we don't provide services, but I think just being present.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Feel free to ask. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. And we also have Sue Wilson. Sue, good evening.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
So, I'm not as cool and suave as they are, I'm a very nervous speaker. I'm going to look at my notes just to make sure that I get everything right and keep it under five minutes, okay? So, my name's Sue Wilson, and I'm the Executive Director at First Up Daycare Center, and we have served children in Boone County for 53 years this month. But I wasn't at the, I'm, okay. So anyway, we're licensed to serve up to 133 children, but beginning July 1 of this next month, we're going to be forced to relinquish two classrooms. That's going to leave us with a loss of 20 pre-K children and 30 school-aged children. And in funding, that's a loss of over $50,000 in the summer, dropping to $30,000 during the school year. We originally had set up a rental situation with the original owner, but after seven years of operation, we were no longer privy to that contract because he would not renew the contract. Then, the original owner later became sick and passed away within a month of 2022. During the interim, one of the owner's daughters took the lead to sell the building. And we were just collateral, depending on what the new owner decided. Once the building was purchased by the new owner, he met with us and he was happy to see we were a childcare center, and stated he would leave us alone, everything's great. But then things got bad real quick, and his intentions on the building had changed. He initially made us relinquish our break room and our storage room on the other side of the building, and then he bricked that up to separate us from his section, his rental spaces on his side. He never established a contract with us, and that's leaving us, of course, in a very vulnerable position. During his tenure, he's refused to pay for important repairs, knowing that we would be forced to shut down if we didn't comply with those repairs. That includes $7,000 repair on the boiler and their filter replacements, and over $3,000 in pipe repairs. And he also graciously provided an entrance for mice to come in and invade our space last year because he was putting up new air conditioning units. That was fun. He has taken our break room, he's taken our storage room, he's taken our infant and toddler playground, and now he's planning to take the gym. The gym contains a small kitchen that we use, a storage room, and a laundry slash custodial room. And it's got a utility sink. With these three things being taken away, that's going to shut us down. There's no way we can continue without those spaces. But, we worked really hard, and we worked it out where we could move the kitchenette area into one of the classrooms that he's taking away. And then he's going to allow us to use the utility room, and then he's going to let us use the kitchen.
To do dishes.
Okay? So this is kind of where we're at with that. And he can decide at any time to pull anything he wants from us. If the owner decides at any time that we're no longer allowed to use the spaces, and we will need to close, and the doors will have to be shut down within 90 days. So, we're currently 97% state-funded, which is the highest I've seen for us, and I've been there quite a while. But we use the Child Care Assistance Program, which is called CCAP, and that's state funding, that we receive for low-income families or single-income families. What that is, is the state pays a portion of their childcare fees, and they are responsible for paying the remainder of those fees. The co-pays, which is what they pay, will vary depending on how much income they have make, I'm sorry, and then how many children or how many people are in the family. Losing the center is going to leave over 100 children, and you heard Livia, there's not too many to begin with, without care. Single parents may be forced to stop working, or they will be forced to have their children watched in a potentially unsafe environment or in unsafe situations. So, we are just coming before you, I'm just following them, just to let you know that we are probably the main daycare center for low-income families. Majority of our children, anyone in that 90 percentile is an at-risk child. So, we work really hard, they start at six weeks, and they go through, all the way through 11 years of age. And I say kudos for the staff that work there because they work in some pretty horrendous situations, you never know what you're going to walk into. Every morning, my phone, bing, it's 6 o'clock, I'm like, here we go, here we go. So we have had multitudes of issues, and they push through it. We've had the gym leak, they're dumping buckets, I'm telling you, I am so proud of them. They are also coming from lower income. The governor's trying to help, but these are single, a lot of single parents as well that work at the center. So, if there's anything you guys can help with, we're looking to start a fundraiser, and this is all real new to me, but I wanted to come before you to tell you the need that we have and how desperate that need is. Because we don't know, we don't know if any time he can say, you know, I'm done with you. So, but we work with him, we work really hard, and we say yes, sir, no, sir, or yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am. So, so far, everything's going pretty good in that respect. But, like I said, he keeps taking things, and we know eventually, you know, we're going to be done, he's going to be done with us. So, anyway, that's what I had to say, isn't that a pleasant way to end your evening? So.
Well, Sue, you know, when I had been, you'd actually been so gracious and invited me to Thanksgiving at...
Yeah, I remember that.
Oh, yeah, so do I. And it is amazing, you know, the facility that you have and how much you're able to do within that facility, and taking anything away from it, I'm sure, makes it that much more difficult.
Oh, it's so hard, yeah.
However...
We're losing a lot of private pay, too, because the building's starting to
Yeah.
fall apart, and we're doing everything we can to keep it together.
Yeah. And I know you're right, John had owned that, and then he had passed.
Yeah.
And it had made it difficult, for sure.
It made it really hard because he, it was so quick that he...
Yeah, yes.
We couldn't sit down and talk, so...
So, if you do a fundraiser, would you please keep me apprised, if you would, please?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And certainly, I think you have my card.
Yes, I do.
So, anyhow, if anybody has any questions for Ms. Wilson, feel free to ask, but I understand what you're up against. And perhaps, you know, maybe, maybe there's some relief. I had talked to some individuals at the state after we had chatted last time, and I don't know if that's changed, but I certainly will follow up, so...
Well, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Well, thank you, everybody, for letting me be here tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes.
I don't think anybody has any questions.
No questions?
All right. Nice to see you again, thank you.
You, too, thank you.
All right, moving on. Item four in your packet, a approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council dated May 19th, 2025, as presented. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Thank you. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions, any comments, any corrections regarding the motion regarding the minutes in front of you? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And under public, five public hearing, we have none, special messages and proclamations, we don't have any this evening. Approval of expenditures, there are none. Number, item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers, A8A, approval of the minutes of the regular committee of the whole, public safety and finance, finance and personnel, dated May 27, 2025, as in front of you. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you, and second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you both. Any corrections, any comments regarding those minutes on the motion in front of you? Feel free to ask. All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And moving to 9A, we have unfinished business. Item 9A, ordinance 723H, in front of you for a second reading this evening, that being an ordinance amending Section 74-221G2, which is fireworks and nuisance declared and penalties of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens. If there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor, we'll try and answer them. Essentially, what this does, it is an ordinance amending the fireworks and nuisance declared penalties of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. If you go to Section 74-221G2, as I had mentioned, any person violating this shall pay a fine of not less than $750 nor more than $1,500 in sentencing. The court shall consider the amount and type of fireworks, if any injury to persons or property occurred as a result of the fireworks and any prior violations of this section. So it does send a strong message to individuals, and believe me, it's not the majority of people, it's a small group of individuals that we have issues with, and we've had injuries in the surrounding communities, and we've had them here as well. So, that's in front of you, if there's any questions, feel free to ask. Anybody? Okay. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 723H, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls the roll, please.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And 9B is ordinance 724H in front of you this evening for a second reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow daycare center, three-plus children within planned office district, and this to be located at 2170 Pearl Street. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor, feel free to ask. Gina will chime in, I know. Alderwoman Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. Because they were talking about the deficit of daycare, I was wondering, do you know how many they can take as children capacity?
Based on the testimony the applicant provided at the public hearing, I believe DCFS is looking at approximately 70 children right now, but the state will mandate their population.
Thank you.
All right, and in your packet from the Planning, Zoning Committee is a memo regarding recommendations for the Orland Kids Academy at 2170. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at it. If there's any questions regarding that, now's the time. Okay, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, well, when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls the roll, please.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And flipping the page, uh, ten, item ten, new business, A, uh, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash one, that being a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the clerk to attest a contract for dedication of land, uh, regarding Lot Three, MH subdivision between the City of Belvidere and MH Bradley LLC. This is, of course, on the Dodge Lanes property, and we have chatted about it, but if I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Um, any questions, any comments regarding the motion, feel free to ask. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have an approximate time when they're going to start this project?
I believe they got their demolition permit last week, and they were just waiting to finalize the, uh, the transaction between the previous owner and this developer to really start moving forward. They do have, uh, for the two restaurants, the Chipotle and the Starbucks, they have already submitted those for building plans, so those are under review for building permits. So, uh, once all these last contracts and pieces are in place, they should be moving rather quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Countryman?
Yeah, um, Troy Lee Excavating applied for the demolition permit, they have not picked it up yet. Um, our second set of review comments for Chipotle, we received last Friday, um, and they're getting passed around with staff, um, and then Starbucks is right behind it.
Any, any other questions, uh, certainly feel free to ask, try and answer them. Thank you, Kip. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
All right, motion passed, thank you. And, uh, moving down the list, motions forwarded from Committee of the Whole Planings, uh, public, excuse me, Public Safety, Finance and Personnel, uh, dated May twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five, motions of Finance and Personnel. Chairwoman Frank, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to contribute two thousand five hundred to Santa Claus House Eagle Scout project to be paid for from line item zero one dash five, one one zero dash seven nine zero zero.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions, any other discussion, uh, certainly feel free to ask. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, and, uh, as a reminder, um, Scout, uh, Charlie Beckles, excuse me, Charlie Beckles, um, brought this project, uh, and the city will take ownership of the Santa's house, and, uh, as it's constructed, uh, I know it will give, uh, a lot of years of service, uh, we'll put it away and store it, uh, when it's not seasonal, but during the Christmas, uh, time, that'll be taken out, and, uh, it'll give kids a chance to come and visit, uh, and I think it's going to be pretty neat, but, uh, he has raised money as well, uh, but I think the twenty-five hundred is, um, is responsible from the city's point that we're going to inherit it, and it's certainly worth a lot more than that. I know he's taken in good donations, so. It'll be nice, uh, everybody will get a chance to see it, and shouldn't take long to build since I'm going to be helping, so. We'll see. All right. Uh, thank you for that, motion did pass. Item B, motion to accept five thousand dollar grant from Walmart and to transfer three thousand dollars from the Heritage Days line item to the Belvidere Police Department for the purchase of Flock safety cameras, and to transfer one thousand from the Heritage Days, Days line item to the Belvidere Fire Department for the purchase of AHA materials and fees, CPR training materials, instructors, and support for the community CPR program. Um, and then, the other thousand dollars will be for Heritage Days, correct, Gina? Right? So, if I could have a motion to that effect, please, if anybody give me a motion? Oh, that's right, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Um, and I jumped the gun on, uh, that, didn't I? Uh, sorry, Chairwoman Frank. Um, anyhow, um, so that's how it will be dispersed, um, and, uh, my voice is a lot deeper than yours, Wendy, so they know, they know it wasn't you. Um, so we have that, uh, we have that out of committee. If there's any questions, uh, feel free to ask. Okay? No questions, uh, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Item C, motion to approve the low bid from Rock Road Companies in the amount of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and fourteen and forty-six cents, excuse me, for the twenty twenty-five MFT street overlay program, subject to IDOT approval. This work will be paid for from MFT funds.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions, any comments regarding the motion, please feel free to weigh in. Anybody have any questions, feel free to ask. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, and Alderwoman Gramkowski and only Alderwoman Gramkowski.
Thank you.
Item D.
D, uh, motion to approve the low bid from Countryman, Inc., in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents for the twenty twenty-five MFT thermoplastic pavement striping project, subject to IDOT approval. This work will be paid for from MFT funds.
All right, thank you, and we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments on the motion out of committee, feel free to ask. Um, I know we've already entertained this, so. We have none, um, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
And McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Alderwoman Gramkowski.
Item E, motion to approve the proposal from Nelson Carlson Mechanical Contractors in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars for the installation of a four-inch RPZ backflow device and water meter in the main equipment building for the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be paid for from the Plant Depreciation Fund.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor, feel free to ask, and we'll try and answer that. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And flipping to the last page, item G, uh, Chairwoman Gramkowski.
Motion to approve the proposal from Henderson Products in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for a ten-yard dump box, snowplow, and salt spreader. This equipment will be paid for from Water Depreciation Line Item Number sixty-one dash one seven eight zero. The total cost of the new ten-yard dump truck will be two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, four, two hundred and forty-three, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
All right, we have that motion, uh, out of committee. If there's any questions regarding the motion, feel free to speak up, uh, anybody. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?